Mic check, one, two, three. 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 Really? I thought Diego was gonna be here. Sammy, do you know if Diego's gonna be here? Oh, you mean online? That, okay, I follow then. Mic check, one, two, three. Mic check, one, two, three. Okay. So restream is good?
Okay, uh, YouTube wise, so we're on my page. So just one, and then mic check is good on the desk. Right, it's right now.
Yeah. Call order here, the Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, February 27th. Roll call, please.
Yes, let the record reflect, all supervisors are present with the exception of Supervisor Adams, and Supervisor Lopez will join us shortly.
Are there any additions or corrections for closed session, County Council?
There are none, Chair.
Okay, then we'll call for the closed session items of 1A through 1C. Is there any public comment? I see nobody in chambers, nobody online. So, we will, the board will recess for these closed session items, and now we will convene the Board of Supervisors, the Monterey County Water Resources. Roll call, please.
Yes, good morning, let the record reflect, all supervisors are present with the exception of Supervisor Adams, and Supervisor Lopez will join us shortly.
And additions or corrections?
None, Chair.
Then we will call for the closed sessions on items 1A through 1B. Is there any public comment on this? I see none in the chambers and none online, so the board will now recess for the closed session items, and we convene around 10:30 a.m.
Mic check, one, two, three. Mic check, one, two, three. Mic check, one. You go first.
Mic check, one, two, three.
Mic check, one, two, three. Mic check, one, two, three. Mic check, one, two, three. Mic check, one, two, three.
Mic check, one, two, three. Mic check, one, two, three.
Mic check, one, two, three. Mic check, one, two, three. CIO.
Mic check, one, two, three. Mic check, one, two, three. County Council.
Mic check, one, two, three. Mic check, one, two, three.
Mic check, one, two, three. Mic check, one, two, three.
Mic check, one, two, three. Mic check, one, two, three.
Mic check, one, two, three. Mic check, one, two, three.
Give it a second.
Four, five, six.
Wait till it changes to the white shot.
There we go. Mic check, one, two, three. No, I'm over here. Please. Mic check, one, two, three. There we go.
Mic check, one, two, three. Mic check, one, two, three. We are not... Oh, you know what it is? It's because it's on the staff shot?
It's the same camera.
Yeah. That's all good. Valerie, when you have a second, do you want to mark one for us?
Clerks, mic.
Perfect. Thank you.
Call the order, the reconvene the order supervisors here for ten forty. A roll call please.
Yes, let the record reflect all supervisors are present with the exception of Supervisor Adams.
And the announcement for Spanish Interpretation Services, Diego Salas.
Muy buenos dias, mi nombre es Diego Salas, interprete español inglés para la reunión de hoy. Si usted está planeando hacer un comentario y necesita servicio de intérprete, por favor hablar lenta y suficientemente fuerte para que yo lo escuche. Favor hacer una pausa al final de sus oraciones para asegurarse de que tengo la oportunidad de interpretarle. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, and for the pledge of allegiance, will our CIO like to lead us? Thank you.
Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do want to announce that item twenty-eight for one thirty, which is a public hearing on the amending Title Twenty-One on mitigation requirements for farmland is going to be continued to a later date. Yes.
We're gonna start that item so that we could sort of get an initial presentation.
Oh, do we want, do you want?
Yeah, I think that would be great, because it's.
Okay, we'll have the initial presentation onto there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we'll put it after the, what we'll do then is we'll put it after item twenty-nine, which will be the Department Emergency Management's report and actually number, item number thirty, the presentation of Department Emergency Management on the unmet needs disaster assistance program. Are there any other additions and corrections?
There are. There is a correction to item number six under the ceremonial resolutions from Megan Ruiz Ignacio. There was a revised ceremonial resolution received. Also, a removal of item number twenty-six under AM Scheduled Matters for the County Administrative Office. Per the department's request, this item will be removed from the agenda and come back at a later time. And removal of item number seventy-five under consent calendar general government. Per the department's request, the item will be removed and come back at a later time. And lastly, to add to an adjournment in memory of Sarah Hernandez and Amanda Oakes.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move to the ceremonial resolutions. We have five presentations today. We have ceremonial resolutions number two through nine. Kind of a, any, so moved by Supervisor Lejo, second by Supervisor Lopez on approving these. All those in favor say aye. A comment, sorry, public comment on these resolutions, none online, no. Yes, you have a comment on the resolution? These are, we have, on the board agenda, there's, there's nine, I think it is, or seven ceremonial resolutions, which. Yeah, you should wait for the public comment then, yes. That will be having that afterwards. So, there's no, nobody online either, and we'll close public comment and move to a vote on this. All those in favor on the resolutions, please signify by aye. Aye, opposed, motion passes. With that, Supervisor Lopez, would you like to do the first one?
Does anybody in the room not know Fernando? I don't think so. Fernando's been around a long time, serving this community. Thirty-eight years as an education leader in Monterey County, and we all knew him as "The man who threw a good party." But at those parties, he made sure to walk around and make all the right introductions. Nobody left without gaining value from the company. He carried that skill and talent across to serve all Monterey County residents when he joined the Board of Trustees at Nativitad Hospital. He served us not just as a trustee, but as chair for many years. Fernando has given a lot to our community for decades, and he's finally leaving us, unfortunately, at the Board of Trustees to spend a little more time with his family. We want to thank them for contributing all that extra time that he had to give to us as a community. It means the world to us to have had that time that you dedicated to leave our hospital in such a wonderful condition and to bring it back from where a lot of folks remember the word Nativitad from. But I want to read just a couple of these, because they're so important. Whereas Fernando Elizondo served as a commissioner on the Monterey County Community Action Commission, which is committed to reducing poverty in our community and funding a network of local providers who specialize in addressing specific barriers to achieving self-sufficiency. Whereas he was a pioneer in championing bilingual education in California as a founding member and executive director of the California Association of Latino Superintendents and Administrators, where he mentored younger administrators to carry on the mantle. And where he previously served as, on the American Association of School Administrators Governing Board and on the Board of Directors of the Association of California School Administrators. He brought all of these talents to us in Nativitad, and he has left us in such a better place. We wanted to take time today to honor you and thank you for your commitment to the Board of Trustees. Thank you, Fernando, and congratulations upon your retirement again from the Board of Trustees this time. Some words for us?
Thank you, thank you so much, thank you so much. Supervisor Lopez, thank you so much. I didn't recognize you with a haircut, that's.
That's what's changed.
That's good. Again, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for the recognition, specifically Supervisor Lopez for this. Actually, as I look around at the Board of Supervisors, I knew some of you before you became supervisors, so that's kind of a neat thing, too. Thank you for your community service. The other group I want to thank, which is so important, is the Nativitad Board of Trustees. You sit on that board. It is a fantastic board. When I got on, the reason I got on the board, and I don't share this other than now publicly, but the reason I got on the board is to find out how healthcare services are provided under umbrella of a trustee, Board of Trustees. And what I found was that there's a group of outstanding, outstanding educator, healthcare providers that are providing services to the, to the, to the tune of having Nativitad be the outstanding, the very best regional hospital in California. There's no doubt about it in my mind, so. I also want to thank Dr. Harris, he's here with a couple of board members, raise your hand, board members. There you go. And I want to thank Dr. Harris for his support. Without an outstanding CEO like himself, we couldn't do what we were able to do. And I want to also thank my fellow board members. The issue of, of meeting so many in ten years of so many different board members was a treat for me, because the issue of seeing, meeting so many different folks that all had a passion for doing better than it was yesterday. They do what they do because they do it much better than anyone else. So, thank you so much for that. And lastly, I want to thank not only Dr. Harris, but his staff. Every one of those folks that deliver healthcare to our residents here are outstanding. There, I can't think of another adjective other than just, they're just fantastic. And that's why I say it is the best regional county hospital in California, there's no doubt about it. So, again, thank you, Dr. Lopez.
You're the doctor, Dr. Elizondo. I'm gonna see if I can't get the rest of our Board of Trustees to join us, because Fernando helped build this board. If you guys don't mind coming up to join us for a photo, would you guys come up, members of the Board of Trustees, for a quick photo and family?
Have two other resolutions, I present those there. So, I want to recognize National Employees Appreciation Day and going to have our CIO Sonia De La Rosa stand in for all our, over five thousand employees in Monterey County and so, you know, recognize them on National Employees Appreciation Day, which is March first. And as I mentioned, we have over five thousand employees and about over four hundred and thirty thousand residents in this county that they help serve through their duties. They're helping foster economic growth, maintain our infrastructure, preserve our natural beauty in our land and our waters. And on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I want to express gratitude to all the employees for their exemplary service and thank you again for, very, very much, for all your hard work, your dedication, and just your, your willingness to tackle some of the most difficult problems that we, we face, day in and day out.
Just a quick comment, on behalf of the County Administrative Office and of course, our board with the adoption of this resolution, truly an honor to be here and represent our over five thousand employees who are out in the community and many of our office building, doing the great work for this county. And truly, every day, I'm truly appreciative to be able to work as part of this county and represent all of you. And I'm sharing this resolution with our friend Andreas, who is our Director for HR, since he interacts quite a bit with all of our departments, but also with all the members of our community, through all of you, our employees. So, thank you again for all the work that you do, and it is an honor to represent all of you.
Now, for our second resolution, Lisa Smith, yes? I'm sorry, I don't know everybody here, so maybe if you pass the mic, you can introduce yourselves. You're from the, you're all from the Commission on the Status of Women, is that correct? Yes.
Lisa Smith, Chair.
Hi, good afternoon, good morning, Marisa Hernandez, also part of the Status of Women Commission and for representing District Two.
And my name is Adriana Naristapia, I'm staffing from the Department of Social Services. We staff the Commission on the Status of Women.
Thank all of you for being here today. So, this is, let me pass this resolution on to you here. Sure, thank you. This is to recognize International Women's Day, which is March eighth. And March is, of course, Women's History Month. So, we're presenting this recognition of really all that women do for society, culture, and government, and these extremely important roles as, really, you know, I appreciate you for, for being here and representing that. So, a little, a little history here, too, is, is March is designated, as I mentioned, National Women's History Month by National Women's History Project. And this year's theme is "Women Who Advocate for Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion." So, Monterey County established the Commission on the Status of Women in nineteen seventy-four. And to advocate for matters that particularly affect, affect women, including affordable and quality childcare, education, housing, equal pay, sexual harassment, and community service. It's, to, you know, we want to extend our gratitude for this, but this is the fiftieth anniversary of this commission, so it is really a milestone. And I want to pass this on to see if there's anything you want to say, but on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we really appreciate all the work you do and, but, you know, all women are doing here for us and our government and society.
Thank you, I'm gonna pass this to Marissa.
Thank you, I, you know, thank you so much to, to the county, to the Board of Supervisors and also staff at the county level, because, you know, without their support, we would not be able to have our commission. I think, you know, we have a great leadership with our Chair, Lisa. And, you know, we are, you know, all of our commissioners are very passionate in terms of being an advocate for our women in the community. And I know, even though this commission is a statewide commission, unfortunately, there's not a lot of commission. There's still counties that still don't have a commission, so we're fortunate enough to have our commission. And I know we're excited to come pretty soon, on March nineteenth, to do a presentation on some of the issues pertaining to our women, so thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Through the chair, if I, if I can just make a quick comment about the Commission on the Status of Women, that there's a survey that they've posted online, so for anyone who's watching and has the opportunity to take that survey, share some of your feedback. We'll make sure we get that posted on the county social media to get shared, so you guys can get high-quality feedback from a wide variety of Monterey County residents.
My, Mr. Chairman? All right. Good morning, everyone, good to have you all here. As you could see, this is part of our meeting, where we're able to recognize some amazing people in our communities, and also recognize some special days. Here in Monterey County, last year, our Board of Supervisors recognized February twenty-seventh, every February twenty-seventh, as John Steinbeck Day, in honor of our native son here of Salinas, but one of our greatest American writers, Pulitzer Prize-winning author, and also winner of the Nobel Prize in Literature during his lifetime. So, today, we have some special guests to call up, to honor, and I'm gonna, hopefully, I got everybody here on my list that my staff gave me. We're gonna call up Kathy Culper, President of the Valley Guild, Jessica Clary, Vice President of the Valley Guild, Leslie Ernest, past President of the Valley Guild, Susan Shaw, its treasurer, Carol Murray, and John Mahoney, Member-at-Large of the Valley Guild. Everyone, today, in honor of John Steinbeck, which today would have been his one hundred and twenty-second birthday, we are celebrating the fiftieth anniversary of the Steinbeck House Restaurant operated by these fine folks, these great leaders of our community, the Valley Guild. It's only a couple blocks distance, right behind here on Central Avenue. I want to encourage everyone to visit. We had a beautiful ceremony last Sunday, right? And so, this resolution, before we present it, it reads, "In nineteen seventy-three, eight amazing women who shared a common interest in gourmet cooking and showcasing the produce of the Salinas Valley formed the Valley Guild, raising enough money to buy and refurbish the beautiful Steinbeck House." On February twenty-seven. On February 27th, 1974, the doors of one of Salinas' historic landmarks and the childhood home of renowned author and Nobel Laureate John Steinbeck opened as a Steinbeck House Restaurant on his 72nd birthday." The Steinbeck House Restaurant opened, is open five days a week with two seedings. The Queen Anne Style Victorian House was built in 1897 and the Steinbeck family first resided in the home, I believe, in 1901. The Steinbeck House Restaurant is currently operated by volunteers and employs a full-time chef. And it was listed on the National Register of Historic Places in August of 2000. The Valley Guild and the Steinbeck House Restaurant invites the community to visit the Steinbeck House and enjoy the local cuisine, a tour and the Steinbeck family pictures and memorabilia and its amazing gift shop downstairs. So therefore be it resolved that the County of Monterey, the Board of Supervisors, on behalf of all our residents, hereby congratulate the Valley Guild and the Steinbeck House Restaurant on their 50th anniversary and wishes them continued success in promoting our rich history, local history, and attracting visitors from throughout the world here to Monterey County. And with that, if we give them all a round of applause, everyone, and I'll present that to our President. And then I'll pass the mic to you. Maybe one of your colleagues can help you hold that frame there.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate this and we appreciate the recognition. We work very, very hard at 132 Central Avenue, not too far from here. And like you said, we are all volunteers there, four paid positions, that's it. And we have been going 50 years strong. COVID shut us down for about 18 months, but we reopened and we are back strong. And we invite everyone to come and join us and be a part of the history here in Salinas. Thank you. Oh, yes. Yes.
Do you want to say what they could see there? I know you guys have some costumes.
Yes, I'll pass that off to John, who is one of our docents. If you wanted to share history on what we have within the house, the memorabilia that is there, that people can come and see.
Yes, we have, we offer tours of the Steinbeck House during the summertime and on Sundays. And we have a lot to show. There's a lot of our, of the original furniture that the Steinbecks used when they lived there, starting in 19, 1901. We have throughout the house, we have lots of pictures of the family members, pictures of John Steinbeck with various people. So when you come to the Steinbeck House, you, you see not just where they lived, but you were able to learn a lot about them and their family.
We have a website, steinbeckhouse.com. Please visit that for the most recent lunch information and anything that's happening and going on.
I, one thing I'd like to add, in addition to the restaurant, when you go downstairs, we have a gift shop. It's called the Best Cellar. It was the cellar when the, when the Steinbecks lived there. And it will be, it will celebrate its 50th anniversary next year. We're one year behind the restaurant. But the, the Best Cellar is open every day from Tuesday through Saturday, from 11:00 in the morning until 3:00 in the afternoon. If you haven't been there, stop by. I think you'll find a lot of interesting merchandise and you'll find Steinbeck memorabilia there as well.
My two cents is we have drawn people from 193 different countries throughout the world to Salinas.
And Leslie is dressed as Olive Ernst. I'm sorry. Sorry, she is Leslie Ernest. But today and over the weekend, she has dressed in costume, era costume and antique attire. And in the restaurant, you will also see aprons and how our uniforms that we wear have changed throughout the decades.
Yeah, and last thing I would want to say, I'm a big fan of John Steinbeck. I'm really glad we have these, these amazing local historians, preservationists, volunteers. And I said on Sunday that it's so important to celebrate our local history, our local culture, not only for the present and preserving the past, but for the future generations. We have children there. I hope that those children that were there one day will say they were there for the 50th and they'll be there for the 100th when we're perhaps no longer around. But we want to also, when I was in the State Assembly, I authored the legislation to put up the John Steinbeck signs here as you enter Salinas. And I also want to encourage people, that house is where John Steinbeck was born. As you go up the stairs, you go into that first room to the left, he was actually born in that room. And then in the, in the gift shop on the bottom is actually have the bed frame of where John Steinbeck was actually born. It has a little sign on it as well. So a lot of amazing history. Want to encourage you all to go check it out, celebrate their work, support them, donate to this great cause that they fundraised to keep this beautiful place open. With that, I want to thank you. If we could give them a last round of applause, everyone. Muchas gracias. This next one, we're going to do online because Megan, we're going to honor now one of our, our good colleagues who just recently retired. We're going to honor Megan Ruiz Ignacio, but I'm doing it from up here because she's not able to be here in person. But we'll do this on, on Zoom for her. This resolution is commending Megan Ruiz Ignacio for her 16 years of dedicated service to the County of Monterey upon her retirement. Megan was born in Angeles City, Philippines to Benny and Ravel Ruiz and is one of seven children. She has four sisters and two brothers. She was raised in Oakland, California and is a faithful Las Vegas Raiders fans, Oakland A's, Golden State Warriors fans. And I've seen a lot change since she grew up there, seeing her teams move on. She had, she has a passion for sports and fitness and was a volunteer coach for Washington Middle School Boys Basketball and has kept official scorebooks for the Seaside Girls Basketball Varsity, Jackson All-Stars Basketball and Salinas High Girls Varsity Basketball. On top of that, she has taught a variety of fitness classes, including Island Preise Hula, Cardio Hula and U-Jam Fitness. She is committed to efforts in keeping our children safe and supported the Williams family when their 13-year-old daughter Christina Marie Williams was abducted in June of 1998. She organized community events on the 12th of each month, hoping that someone would notify the authorities about the disappearance of Christina Marie Williams. Megan Ruiz Ignacio has been married for 35 years to Michael Ignacio. They have an amazing son, Mason, and a daughter, Malina. Mason and his wife, Janelle, have adorable little son, Marcel, who has, who has stolen Megan's heart. Therefore be it resolved that on her retirement, the County of Monterey Board of Supervisors and on behalf of all our residents, we recognize, commend and thank Megan Ruiz Ignacio for 16 years of dedicated service to the County of Monterey. And we wish you success, good health and happiness in all future endeavors. And before I pass the mic to you, Megan, I do, I just personally want to say thank you. You've always been a top professional, always helped me and my office out tremendously. The public doesn't always get to see these amazing individuals that we have in our county family that make us look good, that help us run these meetings, that do a lot of work behind the scenes. And when they retire, it's always a beautiful thing to really thank them and their families for giving so much of their lives and their careers to not only our county government, but to the people of Monterey County. And before I pass it to you, Megan, I want our Assistant CIO Nick Chulos to also share some words on your retirement.
Thank you Supervisor Alejo and good morning, Megan. You know, just a few very quick words. I had the privilege of working with Megan for the eight years that she was in the County Administrative Office. And I just want to commend you, Megan. You were such a dedicated, hardworking, energetic, exuberant person, a real team player. As Supervisor Alejo pointed out, you're always willing to help out wherever the need was in some of our emergency activations or whatever might have come up. You were always positive and willing to help. You will definitely be missed and I just want to commend you as a coworker and also as a friend. I, I really appreciate your, your friendship and your, your goodwill all these years that you worked with us. So congratulations on your retirement and I wish you the very best. Thank you Supervisor Alejo.
If we could give a round of applause, everybody? And Megan, the mic is yours.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can.
I miss you guys so much. Oh, I, I am so grateful for, um, good morning. I, I wrote something down because if I didn't write it down, I'll talk for hours. Good morning, Honorable Supervisor Sonia De La Rosa, Susan Bliss, Department Heads, County Family and Friends, Nick Chulos. I'm honored to be invited to be presented with a resolution for working at the County of Monterey for 16 wonderful years. My mom worked for the County of Alameda in the Auditor's Department and she retired after 27 years. My son and daughter worked with me for summer high school jobs at Nativida Medical Center. And my son went on to, because of working and their experience working at Nativida, they decided to take on careers in serving the public and being public service. My son works at Queens Medical Hospital here in Honolulu, Hawaii and the HR Department. And my daughter is completing her, um, she's completing college. Her major is in public health and she is currently working an internship with the Santa Clara County. Now I have worked with some incredible people that I admired and learned a great deal from at Nativida Medical Center. They started my career with the county. Actually, Marlene Bush met me in a parking lot at a community event and I was working as a temp. And she invited me to apply for certain jobs and I got a job with a workforce investment board and then got hired on as a permanent employee at Nativida Medical Center. And just learning and gleaning from the wisdom from Andrea Rosenberg, Harry Wise, Les Foster, remember him? Beloved Carol Adams and Manny Gonzalez and my, so dear to my heart, Nick Chulos. He really took me under his wing when my job was dissolved and I had no place to go. And he said, "Come on board, Megan." I worked with Lou Baumann, Charles McKee and Sonia De La Rosa. Boy, that woman is a mover and shaker and she is definitely for the people. I worked with the amazing district office staff and appreciate the grand opportunity to witness staff aides being promoted to supervisor positions. Chris Lopez and Wendy Askew, Bravo for everything that you do. I, I enjoyed, you may think that's crazy, rolling up my sleeve and getting dirty, working the emergency efforts with the county employees and local community events under the leadership of, you know, Deborah Wilson and, um, Gracie Rubio in the community and Claudia Link with the seaside sports teams. Because I, I really enjoy working with children and being positive influences in their lives and helping them direct their lives to be, become positive role models in our community and honorable in, in their school and, and, and just be successful citizens. I am grateful for the golden opportunities to, oh gosh, serve under the five district offices. I remember doing a community event when Supervisor Alejo was back then, Assembly Member. And I called him on stage to do the electric slide. And he gracefully bowed down to it, but he was there and he, he represented the Assembly Member position and now the Supervisor position. And just witnessing Supervisor Askew at the St. Francis Xavier International Festival and seeing Chris Lopez at the many homeless community events. God, I am just so thankful for this. And Supervisor Mary Adams and many outreachers in Monterey. And, and Chair Glenn Church, the many times I had to send you apologizing emails because I, for some reason, um, my, my meeting invites kept going to your Gmail. So I hope that that problem has been resolved. I'm proud to have the chance to work with a clerk of the Board's Office, the amazing team, the CIO's Department and the tremendous talented support staff, Karina, Claudia, Neri, Sandra and County Council, Elsa in the Health Department, Kim Moore in HR and Vanessa. Oh girl, you are bound to be great in Supervisor Church's office. I could count countless meetings and I've got to say, I enjoyed every single one. I paid attention and I took action and I hold that dear in my heart. And I will continue to pray for the county leadership, that the resources will continue to pour in to help those in need in our community. And I will continue to pray for wisdom and knowledge and discernment for each district office and department heads within the county. The harvest is plentiful, but the workers are few. I treasure each memory of working at the county for 16 years. But one thing, one thing I must not leave out is the superb job of the District Attorney's Office led by Janine Pacchioni in bringing the 22-year case to close for the family of 13-year-old Christina Marie Williams, who was abducted, raped and murdered in a former four-door area. Those were superheroes in action. And that's the kind of people the County of Monterey fosters and raises, is people to take action. When something wrong is happening, don't sit back. We don't sit back. We get busy. We do something, make a change for the better. So I spend my retirement rehabilitating my knee. I'm, I'm re-enrolling college and working on my theology major. And I babysit my grandson who loves nature. And one thing I do remember when I announced my retirement to Debbie, Debbie Paldinelli, she said, "I encourage staff to retire and enjoy life. If you can afford it, do it." And I did. And that was the hardest thing to do is to press send. So now I await five more months and then I can get hired back as a contractor. But thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And I think a few folks want to, colleagues want to say some words.
Yep, thank, thank you, Megan. It's always been a pleasure working with you. We're going to miss you. Your enthusiasm, your dedication is really unmatched. And I think Supervisor Lopez, you have something you'd like to say?
Yeah, you know, when you work in government, you often find, folks, we're human. You can have a bad day. The one person who I don't know if she's human is Megan. Cause I don't, I never saw her have a bad day. Even in those toughest moments and those moments of crisis, Megan was there, who's just stepped up and followed through with a smile on her face and made good things happen. And coming up within the Office of Supervisor Salinas at the time, she was always so helpful, making things work. And I can tell you when my staff saw this on the agenda, they reached out to me and said, "Wait a minute. No, 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 Megan can't go. She's an inspiration. She's incredible." And so we all agree, Megan, you're incredible. You've earned this retirement and we just congratulate you for everything that you have ahead of you with your family. I'm so excited for you to be going back to school. I can't wait to see what your next chapter brings, but thank you for all that you've given to the residents of Monterey County.
Supervisor Askew?
Megan, I don't know if you can remember, but when I, I think it was 2008, 2009, when I started working with Jane Parker and we were doing a lot, there was a lot going on with Nativida. And I spent many, many days on the phone calling you. You modeled what it meant to be a County of Employee, a Public Service Representative. Every conversation I had with you stood out. I like specifically remember some conversations I had with Supervisor Parker talking about you and the way that you rose to whatever the issue was that we were trying to work through or figure out. And it really, it was one of those things that stood out to me from day one in my county service that, that there are, that there are people who choose county public service positions. And the, the way in which you delivered your job with mission-driven enthusiasm showed up holding completely. It wasn't just about working with you, but it was how you set the tone for my engagement, working with the County of Monterey. So thank you for, for giving me that. But thank you also for giving everything that you have to our community. We will, we will miss you here on a day-to-day basis, but I'm really glad that you get to spend time with your family and your grandbaby. So enjoy every minute of it.
Thank you again, Megan. And when you are back this way, please don't be a stranger. I'll move on to.
Claudia Link, had her hand up. Claudia Link?
Oh, Claudia Link. Yes, please, Claudia, go ahead.
Hi, good morning. I just wanted to congratulate Megan Ruiz Ignacio on her retirement. Some people have worked best friends and best friends in real life. I was very fortunate to have her as my best friend. I met Megan and worked with her. I met Megan and worked with her five years ago at the Pebble Beach Company, and then we ended up at the county together. And as was said about Megan, not only was she enthusiastic about helping when there was a need, she was more enthusiastic about enlisting others to help with her. So I'm so happy for you and your retirement. I know that you're going to enjoy time with your family. We are going to miss you, but we wish you the best.
Thank you. We'll move on then to appointments, and we have a number of appointments. It's items 10 through, 10 through 23. Is, first I'll ask, see if there's any public comment on any of these appointment items. Seeing nobody in the chambers, this is not for general public comments. So, and nobody online either? Bring it back here to the board for...
Of appointments, Mr. Chair?
Okay. Moved by Supervisor Lopez, seconded by Supervisor Alejo. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Very well. We'll move on, and now we'll move to general public comments. I'm sorry, consent? Did I miss a thing here? I'm sorry. Just missed it on my calendar here. We have item, consent items, just be a moment here. Consent items number 34 through 87, which we have quite a few here. First, I want to see if there's any members of the board that want to either poll or comment on any. Which, which one, Supervisor?
Comment on 54 and 40, I'm sorry. Comment on 45 and 54.
45, 54. Supervisor Alejo, do you have any? No? I will open up for a public comment first here before we come to the board. Is there any public comment? This is on the consent calendar, not, not, not general public comment. Nobody in the chambers, nobody online? So Supervisor Askew, did you have something there on 54?
Yeah.
45?
Get my, my numbers mixed up here. So 45 is a contract with Gender Health Training Institute. And I just want to commend the county and recognize that while other states and other communities are experiencing really tragic attacks on transgender community members, in Monterey County, we're making commitment to ensure that we're providing appropriate gender-affirming education, resources, and training for our mental health and medical providers, for all of our behavioral health agencies and our hospitals, so that we can ensure that we're providing professional, ethical, and knowledgeable care to transgender and gender expansive clients and their families across their lifespan here in Monterey County. And I just think that's worth calling out as something that we're doing right and well and appropriately here in Monterey County. Item 54, so thank you to our health team, who's made that possible. To item 54, which is the ordinance for littering fines, I just, I will be voting for, for the change today, but I do just want to, again, ask that this item come back to us a year from now with a report on the number of fines that have been issued and the circumstances surrounding those fines. It's been continually raised to our office in internal discussions, that we're, we're making tremendous strides to, to move away from, from fees and fines that disproportionately impact residents. And, and moving into a place where we're not leaving fines to be sort of on a case-by-case basis, but that we really have objective standards. So given that we haven't issued fines currently, we just want to make sure that we don't end up in a situation where implicit bias is playing out in how these fines get levied. So I look forward to receiving that report a year from now. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Askew. So is there a motion to approve? Motion from Supervisor, okay, Supervisor Lopez, seconded by Supervisor Alejo. All those in favor approving the consent calendar?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. With that, we will move to general public comment. And you have two minutes, and this is reserved for people to address any matter to the board that's not on the agenda. As interpreter, okay.
Good morning, everyone. Honorables, miembros del consilio, y la mesa que representa la unión de este grupo.
Good morning, members of the supervisors. I'd like to speak to you today, to this board.
Mi nombre es Rosa Espinoza.
My name is Rosa Espinoza.
Mi apodo es Chelena. Mi apodo es Chelena.
Oh, my, my nickname is Chelena.
Estoy aquí porque mi esposo y yo somos los dos físicamente y mental deshabilitados, físico y mental.
I'm here on behalf of myself and my husband, who both of us are physically, mentally disabled.
Los dos nos cuidamos.
We both take care of each other.
Nos amamos.
We both love each other.
En nuestros overcomes que sufrimos y el estigma social.
Yeah, with all the social stigma that we suffer.
La razón es que porque estoy aquí quiero dirigirme al supervisor Luis Alejo. ¿Podría levantar la vista, Luis Alejo?
I'm here to speak directly to Supervisor Alejo.
A la oficina del representante de 93906, si me equivoco, no sé quién es entonces.
I spoke to the representative for the area code 93906.
Me envió a housing authority.
La envió a donde?
A housing authority.
He sent me over to the housing authority.
Y housing authority me dice de lindo del caso porque no tienen ellos representación legal.
Housing authority got off the case because they don't have legal representation on the case.
Housing authority me envía CRLA.
¿Puede repetir, por favor?
Housing authority me envía a CRLA.
Housing authority sends me over to CRLA.
Y encontré a CRLA no haciendo su trabajo.
And I found out CRLA were not doing their job.
Me abrieron la puerta cerrada a diez y media de la mañana y estaban en lonche.
I went to 10:30 o'clock to their door, and they were closed for lunch.
¿Para qué quiero estos programas en la comunidad si no nos están para ayudar?
Why do I need a community program if they're not there to help us?
La razón es la siguiente.
Here's the following reason.
Sufí fraude por el dueño de los apartamentos de Mangold Property.
The owner of the apartments through Mangrove Property?
Les compré la seguridad de renta por un año.
I bought the renters insurance for one year.
Nos cobraron sin darme un documento oficial que me mostrara a mi esposo porque él fue el que recibió la llamada a las seis y media de la mañana, horario de dormir.
They charged us for this document, which my husband received at 6:30 in the morning.
Cobrándonos de nuevo a seguridad de renta.
They were charging us again for the renters' insurance.
Un cargo de 42.50.
A charge of 42.50.
Un dinero que nosotros, yo y mi esposo estamos sobreviviendo con mil dólares.
It's a charge that me and my husband are surviving with only a thousand dollars.
Un dinero que iba a servirme para comprar comida.
Money that I was destined to buy food.
Y para mis gastos de lavandería.
And for my laundry charges.
Ellos están negando de reembolsarme ese dinero, y aquí traigo el money in order que prueba que me están cometiendo fraude.
They're being negative about reimbursing my money, and I'm here to tell you that I'm being committed fraud.
Y un descarado y desfachetado.
And slap on the face.
Abuso de autoridad de vivienda.
Authority abuse on behalf of housing.
Violando nuestros derechos inquilinos.
Violating our renters' rights.
Y aquí la víctima fue mi esposo, Mr. John Patrick Gramble.
And so they give my husband a nickname of Mr. Chamba, De Andrew?
Patrick. Patrick.
No le entiendo con la máscara, señor.
Patrick Gramble. Mr. John Patrick Gramble.
Mr. John Patrick Gramble.
Ciudadano americano.
American citizen.
No habla ni español.
You don't speak Spanish.
Y él está tratando de aprender el idioma del que representa su esposa.
And he's trying to learn the language that represents his wife.
O sea, yo, Rosa Elena Espinoza Mendoza.
In other words, myself, Rosa Elena Mendoza Espinoza.
Rosa Elena Espinoza Mendoza.
Rosa Elena Espinoza Mendoza.
Chelena, para que puedan ubicarse en...
AKA Chelena. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Muchas gracias.
Happy John Steinbeck's birthday. Brought you a little tortilla flat. Good morning, my name is Eric Peterson. And there was an interesting article, kind of small in paper a couple of weeks ago. While homelessness nationally has gone up 12% last year, in the Chattanooga area, it went down 49%. And there's three reasons they're doing that. One is they're trying to house people, so are we. Another is they are trying to provide services, so are we. But the big one is they have eviction control. People, there are programs to help people who can't pay rent, pay rent. There are programs to help landlords who are getting due rent. And that has been a tremendous success. My own eviction story was some years back. I was evicted from a place, and the reason I was given was because the landlord could get more money from somebody else. That's greed. And we don't need greed in Monterey County, especially since that particular landlord is probably doing the same to other people still. And there are probably others doing the same thing. And by the way, Steve McShane said he was one of the good guys. Anyway, that's a side issue. But anyway, we really need to look at something like that, because we do have a housing problem here, and keeping people in their houses rather than trying to, you know, figure it out after they've been evicted would be really helpful.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the chambers for a general public comment? Seeing none, is there anybody online? With that, we will close public comment and move to our scheduled matters, which is item 27, to receive a status report and recommendation to acquire and use surveillance cameras to abate illegal dumping in the unincorporated areas of Monterey County.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Church and members of the board for your time. My name is Maria Fredin. I'm the supervisor for Solid Waste Services for the Environmental Health Bureau. I'm here representing the bureau to provide an update on the camera surveillance program. Also here with me is Marnie Flag. She is Assistant Director of Environmental Health, and she can answer any additional questions that I can't. It is recommended that the Board of Supervisors receive a status report on the potential purchase and use of surveillance cameras to abate illegal dumping in Monterey County in the unincorporated areas of Monterey County, and to provide direction to staff regarding next steps. As a summary of our presentation, we're proposing that environmental health would purchase six cameras and support equipment from a company called Reconyx. Public Works will assist with installation, and cameras will be located in select hotspots, select hotspot areas, and installed within the right-of-way. Environmental health will provide, will follow up on illegal dumping and maintain chain of custody of video evidence. Costs for the cameras and supporting equipment will be approximately $6,000. The monthly service charge of $90 for image review, image viewing and retrieval will be, will be addition to that cost. As, to provide some additional context, the use of cameras come out of the Illegal Dumping and Litter Abatement Task Force. The Illegal Dumping and Litter Abatement Task Force mission is to stop illegal dumping in Monterey County through the three Es: education, eradication, and enforcement. The use of cameras with enforcement is the leading edge of illegal dumping efforts in other counties, in other counties and jurisdictions. Additionally, environmental health, pardon me. Committing to a camera surveillance program, the Illegal Dumping and Litter Abatement Task Force co-chairs, which is myself and Mandy Brooks from Salinas Valley, Salinas Valley Recycles, presented a funding request to the Board of Supervisors February 14, 2023. The request was, was for both the camera project and a community-based social marketing study. While the presentation was viewed favorably, the county had other fiscal obligations at the time. We also presented a grant to CalRecycle in 2022, but that was also unfunded. The project would have funded a two-year camera pilot program plus reimbursement to the county for the cost of roadside cleanup. So where is the funding coming from? Environmental health will purchase cameras by reallocating existing budget items in the Solid Waste Program, my program, and from funds received from an audit of the unified franchise agreement. The cameras, we've decided will have, Reconyx Surveillance Series is cameras that we've decided to go with. They are general law enforcement cameras, and we are proposing to purchase six of them. Three are infrared cameras, just general surveillance cameras. The other three are license plate capable cameras, meaning that they resolve the images so that the reflection of the license plate is readable, or rather, it's reduced so that it's readable to the person viewing the images. In addition to the security enclosure kits, batteries, SD cards, and the cellular service plan for up to two years, all that total would be approximately $8,000. So why Reconyx cameras? The general, they are for general surveillance. They're compact and they're mobile, meaning that we can potentially relocate them to other areas of the county. Three of the cameras are license plate capable, and they have cellular service, which is very convenient, so that the images that they capture can go up to the cloud, and we, with our iPhones, can access them very conveniently. Regulatory agencies, municipalities, parks, other DA offices have had very good user experiences with the cameras, and they're affordable. Our current proposal of operations is that Public Works will install the cameras within the right-of-way. Sites will be selected from known hotspot locations that also have cellular service. Environmental health will follow up on observed observations, observe violations, and maintain chain of custody of the images. Enforcement, environmental health will review video evidence for people, vehicles, license plates, visits, visit the disposal site if necessary, coordinate with law enforcement to identify responsible parties, and of course, report dumping of, to Public Works so that the material just doesn't linger on the side of the road for attracting other illegal dumping. Enforcement may include cost recovery, administrative fees, or fines, or referral to the DA's office. It is recommended that the Board of Supervisors, upon receiving a status report of the potential purchase and use of surveillance cameras to abate illegal dumping in the unincorporated areas of Monterey County, provide direction to staff for next steps. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you for that. Are there comments from members of the board? Yeah, Supervisor Lopez?
Just a question, are these cameras trackable in the case that somebody decides that they want to take one home to have a closer look at it? Can we track it?
That's a good question. I'll follow up. The cameras are all, they're going to be in the environment. Hopefully, they'll be camouflaged, but once you see it, you can't unsee it, and it'll be a target for, you know, target shooting. So that's why we're getting six.
Supervisor Askew?
Thanks. A similar question to, to this one. So the budget, which is, you know, negligible, under $10,000, does, how does it include costs for equipment replacement due to malfunction or vandalism? I'm just anticipating that that will be a challenge. Do we have a upper limit on how much we intend to spend to, for replacements if there is vandalism? Or is this just kind of, we start with this, and then we come back and revisit this if it turns out that we're seeing significant losses?
Yeah, that's a good question. Six cameras is what I think that we can absorb. Six cameras is what I think that we can absorb on a staff level. It's really a function of who's available to do the work. And it's just us. It's just me and one other staff member and Public Works to provide installations, provide installation. We're not going to deploy all six at the same time. Probably two, maybe three. Ideally, what we would like to do is to have a camera trap where we have, we've identified a location in the county. We have one camera on one, on the north side and another camera on the, on potentially the south side so that we can catch someone coming and going. And a license plate reader will be on one of those ends so that we can identify a license plate. We see how that goes.
Kind of like a pilot to see, you know, but we're going to start with the six, see how it goes and then make decisions based on if we see significant losses, if we're able to be successful.
Yeah, and also there's going to be some learning experiences, you know, how to place the camera, the right angle, the best tree to find, and whether or not we can camouflage it appropriately.
Okay. So the other question I have is in terms of monitoring images collected from the cameras, the cost of staff time to review the graphics, to go back and monitor that. Do we have any sense of what the staff cost time could be? And then if there is enforcement, staff time that comes into play? What, what, there's only, you said there's only two of you. So you'll be sort of adding this on to everything else that you already have on your plate. What falls off of the list of what gets done? And how much staff time do we anticipate putting into this for this pilot period or this beginning period?
Staff time is a, is a very good question. Now, there are things we're already doing. We're already looking at illegal dumping. We're already pursuing, you know, enforcement action on some things. Those things are already in place. We're also developing a enforcement, enforcement process where we, in anticipation of increasing the fines for illegal dumping, we're also creating a, a form to issue citations. And along with that is a line for potentially issuing a citation for illegal dumping. And so enforcement is something we think about all the time. But we also think about due process. And even with the availability of video evidence, there's still due process. Who is this individual? Is it their car? Can you match the individual with, with the video evidence that you have? Cameras are not going to be the only thing that drives enforcement. It will be
An augmentation.
Yeah, it's, it's augmenting what we're already doing. The unknown right now is how much time it will take staff to initiate the program at the very beginning months. That right now is an unknown.
Okay, okay, that's a fair answer. And then the other just comments that I have to make, and this is sort of to the larger task force. And I'm calling out a couple of things. The Board of Port states that over the years, there have been numerous efforts to educate the public regarding illegal dumping. These efforts including educational flyers, presentations, online campaigns. I'm also aware of, you know, notifications put in pay stubs, information that is put out by our local landfills. So I know there's a lot that has gone on to that. But I, I think, I feel like there's still more work and more opportunities that we could pursue in terms of education. And so I would just like to make that ask again, that we're making sure that we've got appropriate signage posted. And not just saying this is a threat of dumping, but where, where, where the appropriate place for, for disposal, waste disposal is. And making, if there are programs available to subsidize the cost of disposal for mattresses or for whatever, that we're being really upfront about what the alternatives are. So we're taking a bunch of steps right now to say, you know, we're, we're going to enforce, we're going to penalize, like there are consequences to illegal dumping. And at the same time that we're doing that, I want to make sure we're also being really intentional about saying, don't do this, here's where you can go. Here's the phone number you can call if you need assistance paying for, you know, your disposal. Here's, here are the locations you can go to. Here's the alternatives that are available to you. So that we're making it really clear that there is an option to making this bad decision of illegal dumping. So just why, I think we, I think we're doing a lot, but I think there's a lot more opportunity to do more in the educational side. So just to keep us focused and balanced in that approach. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, Supervisor Lejo.
Yeah, just a couple of questions, just on the, the video quality at night. Because I would assume that many of these bad actors are coming when they're, they're our most out of the public sight, right? So I'm sure they're coming at night. What, is the quality good at night? Would it be a useful tool for us for those dumping in the cover of night?
Actually, the, the technology is very good for, for night capture. It's surprisingly, it's surprisingly good for the, for the cost. And that's one of the reasons why we chose it. Also, I should mention that San Benito County is going with a vendor who uses these cameras for their general surveillance. And San Benito will be, is actually moving forward with, with illegal dumping cameras using Reconyx technology.
And then you said this is, it stores in the iCloud. So even if the, the camera was vandalized or stolen, the footage and the evidence is, is saved in the iCloud.
That's correct.
Perfect, great. And the, and I, and I like, I think this is a multi-layered approach, but I think something is new is that, that there is steep fines. And I think as we deploy the program, it's educating the public that the fines are now steep and very meaningful and, and would be hard hitting for any perpetrator of, of illegal dumping. And then the second is that we have this new camera program. And I think hopefully that has an intended effect. People know where to go, you know, we've got a Marina landfill. We know we've got a trash center here and they got bulky items. But I think the time had come to kind of up and put some real teeth into the ordinance and to put some measures where it could allow us to capture those responsible for it. And I think, and so would this be an administrative fine only? Or would there potentially be criminal liability from the district attorney's office? For those, if it was a clear case caught and perhaps in egregious, would, any conversation with the district attorney's office about criminal liability for illegal dumping?
We have an excellent relationship with the DA's office. And it would depend, whether we refer a case to the DA's office depends on what is disposed. If it's hazardous waste, that is on a different level.
Okay, all right, well, I'm supportive of this. And I'm glad the, when we deploy it, the camera, the public should know and be educated. We have this new camera program and the fines are very significant. And hopefully that has a deterrent effect that we won't have to, you know, impose fines on folks. But I think the time has come to put some meaning behind what we have on our books. So thank you for your work on this. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for the presentation. I, I'm very supportive of this program. I think what I would like to even see is something that's maybe perhaps even more robust. I understand you only have six cameras. You're going to maybe get a couple, three that are being deployed at one time. And so it's going to be somewhat limited as a pilot project. And it's very easy to look beyond this. Some of the other supervisors have pointed out, top, you know, education or, or just what degree of enforcement to utilize on this. I know this is going to be placed at known hotspots. When I've looked at the hotspot map, the thing that surprised me was that people weren't just dumping on one spot, but you'll see a remote road and every, every few feet along that road is almost a hotspot. So it's going to be a real challenge to, to locate exactly where to put this. Although I can think of some areas that get dumped more than others. And I'm sure that's what you're thinking about. Are you looking at placing these? You're talking about potentially moving this around. Is this going to be something maybe in North County, in South County or other areas? I don't know, Upper Carmo Valley gets in here or whatever it may be, or Big Sur. Where are you, how are you planning on geographically to, to do that?
I think geographically it would be the smartest thing to go with where an abundance of illegal dumping is happening. And the fact that these cameras are mobile is fantastic for us. And the opportunity to move these around in different districts is there. We're just going to have to test how mobile it is once it's installed. So again, that's also going to be a learning, learning curve for us.
Good, good, okay. Glad to see that, you know, we're going to get some geographical piloting going on here as well. You did address one of my other questions I had in that you were talking about these would be placed so they're not very clear to see. And I was wondering if we had to put up a sign saying surveillance camera, for example, and apparently we don't. Are you considering with the new, the new anti-dumping fines that we have of, of having fines, signs that state what these fines are nearby? So people maybe see this and then see what their reaction are? Are we going to coordinate that at all?
We, we do have to discuss with county council. As Maria mentioned, we, we have been talking with county council on our approach with our enforcement and coordinating all of the steps that we need to take with them. So that will be discussed with them if that needs to happen and the appropriate signage that needs to occur. Because we do want to make sure we do proper notice and our due diligence with everything that we're doing. But if that needs to take place, then Public Works will post those accordingly as needed.
Yeah, I'm wondering just in terms of, of, of we go through this pilot is whether or not that wouldn't be something to weigh. It's just to see what happens when people see these signs. What is their reaction? Not this?
Exactly. If we just post a sign
Right.
accord, in a hotspot that says, you know, these fines will be levied
Yep.
accordingly, we could potentially do that as well.
Okay, let me see, I had a couple of other questions here. The expected timeline of this, I mean, when you, would you anticipate it would be starting? And when, well, what would be the duration of this? So what, what, what are you really looking for in the end results that you're, when you feel at the end of the pilot that you'll say, okay, this is what we've learned, this is what we didn't, didn't learn and?
So basically, we are running an experiment. The hypothesis is, is that when you put cameras out there, people are going to change their behavior. And the, we're testing whether or not illegal dumping incidences, the volume of material that's dumped along the side of the road reduces over time. Our timeframe initially was two years. But I think that, again, we're going to have a couple of months where we're just learning about the technology and learning about, you know, the physicality of putting it in, in a specific space. And then turn the experiment on. Maybe we come back in a year and give you a report and tell you of our findings and then run the experiment again another year. I think your support here tells us that we're going to go back by the cameras right now and then get started. And probably, you know, if you direct us to give a report back in six months, we will. But we'll get them, as soon as they arrive, we'll get them mounted and get started.
And another question I had, and I'm not sure, probably county council might have to weigh in on this. Have we considered while we're putting these cameras out, these live cameras to have decoy cameras as well?
Yeah, that's a very good, we've been talking about that internally too.
Okay, so I mean, that's, you know, I, I think there's a lot of, yeah, Supervisor Lopez?
You're going to blow our cover, Glenn.
Well, what I'm afraid of is if people's decoy cameras were more present, people will say, oh, that's a fake one. But of course, doesn't always have to be either. So it's, I, I think there's a lot of suggestions here. I mean, one of the other ideas that had crossed my mind as well is we catch these people, is whether or not we shouldn't have designed up a, and this might be down the line to look at, a sort of a traffic school approach. Somebody gets caught and then they got to go spend the morning, three or four hours for traffic, of course, you know, looking at videos and various things. But in this case, learning why they shouldn't be dumping and?
Or picking up trash.
Yeah, or picking up trash. Yeah, there we go. So, you know, this, you know, this would be really focusing on the, the education on the very people who are the offenders, who are, even though it's very prevalent, I still fortunate that it's a minority of, of folks doing this. I, you know, I hope you'll, anyway, take some of these ideas that we've thrown out and, and maybe incorporate some of that into this pilot project. And I, I would be very happy with, if you could come back in six months and would make that a motion that we, we come back and see how it's gone. And maybe at that point, we, we can see where the weak spots are. Maybe we can expand on it. I'm, you know, very enthusiastic about this. And I think it's extremely important and it's just really important to get out there to the public that we're doing this.
I think that's great.
Second that motion.
Okay.
And I, I don't know if we've gone to public yet, but I just want to share on the public education side, I think we're doing a lot, right? And in my view, I mean, from the Solid Waste Authority and the, knowing that we're going all the way down into the schools and educating our kids, trying to break the cycles, but then all the way up through having all the free recycling events and the amount of money we put into promoting those events, it's out there. But I also want to know that perhaps there's a plan for the footage. I want to understand what the legal boundaries are around releasing some of that footage. In the end, right, with license plates blurred out, watching somebody do that could change someone's mind about understanding what that impact looks like in our community. So when we talk about educating, using that footage as part of education, I think could be critical. So just want us to keep that in mind as we move forward as well.
So I, I was going to go out to the public here too, but do you want to comment first, Supervisor?
I have a question, you know, I know we have a, a task force that has been sort of studying the issue, working on the issue, identifying solutions, bringing things forward. And I guess, I'm not sure who sits on that task force or on the board. Do we have an assigned person who sits on that task force? And if, if we do, if we don't, maybe we should. If we do, maybe there's, I'm just wondering if, because there's all these pieces that come together. And I really appreciate your suggestion Supervisor Church about, you know, having some alternatives to going straight to really significant fines. I mean, I don't, I, I do have concerns, right? And I hear from residents who are telling me, you know, hey, look, Glenn, we didn't know there was a mattress disposal option. I don't want those people getting caught up in this. And I know that that's not what we're talking about. But the language of our ordinances and the way that we put policy in place could very easily catch some folks that aren't necessarily the ones who are creating the problems up in this. But I'm just, I'm wondering if, what the level of detail the, the task force discussion is having? And if there's a comprehensive plan that encompasses all of this coming out of the task force so that we're not kind of, it feels a little bit like we're piecemealing policy with, you know, with some of these different things. Is there a comprehensive plan that the task force is, is pulling together?
So I think there's a couple of different answers there. We did have a litter abatement task force. I've sat on that as a member of the public now for probably a decade. But I know we're trying to clean that up because that task force has not met in many, many years.
But there is a, it's the IG?
That's a different one. So it's, there's, there's different, like that public facing one versus the internal working group within the different?
And that's the IDLATF?
The Illegal Dumping Task Force is different. So there's kind of two opportunities there that perhaps need to merge at some point to have formal conversations about some of these ideas like making sure maybe at the point where mattresses, every mattress sales point, that there's, this is how you get rid of your old one, right? Get them at the pinch point.
Stuff like that, yeah.
Yeah.
So who sits on the IDLATF from the county board or from the county? I know my staff attends meetings just to know what's going on, but?
I can answer that.
Awesome.
So the Integrated Waste Management Task Force is different than the Illegal Dumping Lit Abatement Task Force. The Integrated Waste Management Task Force is required by state law that the county meets at a certain frequency to discuss solid waste issues and building infrastructure for solid waste.
Right, no, I guess I'm talking about the Illegal Dumping Lit Abatement Task Force.
Okay, that, I'm, I'm one of the co-chairs. And each supervisor actually sends a representative to our quarterly meetings. So they can come in and out and they sit, they sit and are part of the discussions. So your offices are informed of our activities. But as far as creating an infrastructure, a process?
Yes, what is the tasking of that task force? Is that task force chartered or designated to come up with an integrated plan for how we approach illegal dumping?
It's actually an ad hoc committee created by a CAO about 24 years ago. So it's not required to meet. But we have been meeting for about 24 years now.
Okay, so maybe I have, adding on to the motion, right? So like as we're trying to piece this together, maybe it's time also to look at the IDLATF, look at its mission, look at its function and, and ask it, if we can, if it is appropriate for this board, to ask that task force to help pull together what a strategic plan for response would look like. Taking in all these pieces that we're, we're considering.
Are you suggesting on these two different groups, merging them or?
I'm just, I'm just saying, like, I, we're, we're piecemealing decisions around something that's a big that's a big, broad challenge. And I think that it would be, we have groups that are meeting that are talking about illegal dumping, and I'm saying, I think it would be great if those groups that are meeting in this more informal setting can say, what's all, what are all the strategies that we have available to us? And let's put together a more intentional plan that can come back to this board to say, this is the plan, this is how we're going to tackle, you know, education, enforcement, follow-up, continuous improvement, this is the data that we've collected, this is the next iteration of what we're recommending.
I can answer some of that, too. So the task force also has three subcommittees where we think about what, exactly what you're, I'm suggesting. The enforcement subcommittee, that's mine, the education and eradication subcommittee. And interestingly to us, we created these subcommittees at the same time the state created their own subcommittee, exactly like that. And so we're trying to build up a framework for how we approach illegal dumping as, as a county, as interested parties of Monterey County, who provides solid waste services, environmental health services, and people in the public. So we're doing exactly what you're, what you're asking. As far as implementation of enforcement, that's environmental health and law enforcement in the DA's office. That's what we're doing. In anticipation of increasing the fines, we're, we're looking at a cohesive citation form that would be responsive to administrative fines and illegal dumping fines. And we're in concert with county council to discuss how that would be played out in the field. So, so we're, we're answering that part of the enforcement process that you're suggesting.
And my understanding, your concern Supervisor asks you is, we're, we're kind of getting things piecemeal and not really coming integrated back onto the, to the board?
And yet there is a group that's, that's tasked with putting some coordination around this and making some recommendations. So I guess I'm just saying, if, if, would it be appropriate to ask for an update and a report from the, the task force that's been tasked by the board or the CAO with doing that work?
Is that something you're wanting to add in into the motion?
It was, I started it as a question, and maybe it would be beneficial. So I guess I'll pose it as a question to my colleagues. We deal with less of this in District Four, so I've really deferred to the districts where this is an ongoing issue, to, you know, to tell us what's going to work. But if, I, I do think that it could be, given how significant of an issue it's become, I think it could be beneficial to have a group that's outside of this dais, really looking more closely and bringing together more coordinated plans.
Like an ad hoc committee of this board, or no, no, this group here, just having somebody on there?
I'm just saying, there is a, there is a task force, and I just pulled up the website that was formed by the CAO, was approved by the board of supervisors, it has some tasking assigned to it, but I'm not sure if it's functioning in the way that we want it to, or if it could function in a more coordinated manner to help us do our job as best. So that's, I was just asking a question.
I'm going to go out to the public if there's, if you decide you want to add that to the motion, feel free to. But is there anybody in the, in the chambers that would like to speak on this item? And is there, is anybody online?
Keith Boyd.
Yeah, yes, yes. Under Sheriff?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I just wanted to bring, ensure that staff, as they move forward this process, they're keeping in mind regulations pertaining to, I believe it's SB 34 from 2015, which is, sets retention guidelines for the storage of license plate data by government. There are specific timeframes for how those, that data can be stored, and how that data can be utilized, and how that data can be shared. And I don't, I didn't hear anything in the presentation to reference that those provisions were being addressed, but it's just something for the county to follow through on and to ensure we mitigate future liability or issues if we fail to properly manage any data that's license plate related. And it did note they're buying license plate cameras. So that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Have a good day.
Thank you. Any other, we do have a motion.
If the board chooses, we can have the task force maybe put together a memorandum to give you that information that you're looking for, just so that you have the structure of what is currently being done, you know, related to the three subcommittees that already exist. I think that might be helpful, because there, it appears that one of these task forces is a result of an existing law that went into place. I imagine there's already some correlation between the two, but if there isn't, if that could be explained in that same memorandum, if the board so chooses.
I think that would probably be helpful.
And I would just say, we have a tendency in local government, every challenge, let's do a task force, let's do an ad hoc committee, we got them already. And this is one of those issues that, there's, I think, there's, from my perspective, there's a realization that there's not a wide range of outside-the-box ideas to address an age-old problem, right, of illegal dumping. The, the person you educate, the next time somebody has something, you have a scofflaw who's going to try to take the risk of violating our ordinance, you know? So the, the work is ongoing, as some things are. We get young people that go from childhood to young adulthood, you always have a never-changing population that you got to continue to do this work. But I don't see, outside of the fines, the enforcement, perhaps some of the publicity that Chris is talking about, and publicized cases where people could hear, there's actually people got caught on camera and they got fined, that you're not going to have the deterrent effect to education, like as Chris was saying, there's already groups doing that. But I don't see, I really don't see you guys coming back with some ideas that we haven't thought of, because we've been talking about this for years. We've been talking about the fines, we've been talking about the cameras. It was years ago, I think since, I don't know, when Supervisor Phillips was previously in District Two where this was brought up, and it's already coming to try to finalize a contract with the vendor. But I just, I just wanted to give a different perspective on that, because I always have a tendency, every new issue, we have a new committee, we have a group doing it already, and if there is some, some outside-of-the-box new idea that you have, certainly bring that forward. But I know if you had it, we'd be talking about it right now. Thank you.
Yeah, right, good, Mr. Chair. Mike, I, I think we're fine with the action today as is. If there was any direction to staff, I'd actually want to go kind of the opposite direction, which is maybe blend this illegal dumping task force with the Integrated Waste Management Task Force, because I think then you'd have a rep from every, you know, board, from every board district there, where the work's already being done, to me, in my mind. So it's more of, let's combine the efforts. But big picture, I think you're doing the work. I want to be clear about that. I think the work is being done. I think that the critical piece is getting this component put into the bigger pieces that have already been put in place. Programs are there, the vouchers, the helping people who've been dumped on, making sure that the community is aware of what is available will always be our challenge, but I think we break that cycle by getting to the youth, which is being done. So I commend you for bringing this forward, getting us to this point, and I look forward to seeing the results of this. So I would support the motion with a six-month return to look at the results of that.
And I would actually be supportive of what you just suggested of blending these together more than spreading on out, if that's something we want to head in that direction on.
That's actually where the direction we're headed. We were discussing that.
So maybe the memo that the CAO suggested would help identify, you know, this is who's doing, and these are the different groups, and the opportunity to say, how do we coordinate this a little bit better? I mean, I just quickly pulled up on the website the Illegal Dumping Task Force. I mean, they have an action plan that's 100 years old, it had recommendations, there are many of the same things we're talking about right now, and I think that having that maybe just updated and making sure that we're clear about who's doing what and which meeting people should be attending if they have an interest in having their voice heard and want to be a part of the solution would be, would be helpful.
I think we're probably ready for a vote on this, and we do have some closed session I am still. So all those in, in favor on the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, then we will recess for lunch and close session, we'll be back at 1:30.